That's yours. Huh? Yeah, I, you don't work here anymore.
I don't.
There we go.
I think I might have stuck them there.
Who's she?
No, new chairs, new tables. Two minutes?
If I start to snore, there is something I'm... You important now because we have two.
The agenda on one and the one that most people...
Good evening. It is Tuesday, March fourteenth of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and when you're ready, Candy, you can do the roll call.
Okay. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Benegas. Here. Takowski.
Here.
Caravella.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
We have twelve Alders present.
All right. Thank you very much. We are certified and complying with the open meetings law. Minutes and reports are in the packet, and that would take us to public comment. And we do have two people signed up to speak tonight. The first one would be Jordan. Come on up. You get three minutes. You can just give us your name, and you can adjust the microphone, too.
Does that work? Everybody hear me? Oh, hooray. Council members, thank you. Mayor Swadley, thank you. I'm here to talk about Agenda Point fifteen, the local landmarks commission taking over the downtown area. So I am opposed of this change to the rules or change of the format. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm a big investor in downtown. I own quite a few buildings down there. I've brought Matt Heitman with me also, who also owns other buildings in downtown, and together he and I also invest in a couple buildings together in downtown. So we've been doing this over the past five, six years of investing in buildings, and we've really seen an uptick in that. Now, the process is, is that any building that goes through there still goes through the Planning Commission, and there's already overlay district for the downtown in that area. So the way I see it, or we see it, is that this is unnecessary, government unnecessary change to the rules or to the process that just adds more difficulties to local landowners like him and I. So with that is, this doesn't change the rules. This doesn't change anything. This is just taking power away from the Planning Commission and putting it over on the Landmarks Commission. So with that is just, the Planning Commission has four elected officials on it, if you include the mayor's spot, while the Landmarks Commission only has one elected official on that. So it can be kind of seen that this might say, hey, if you take the Landmarks Commission and put them in charge of all of downtown, that de facto makes all the buildings in downtown a landmark, which there is a difference that, yes, there are landmark buildings down there, and the downtown is considered a national historical district, but the difference is, is what the weight of those means. So landmark has certain rules that those buildings have to follow, while yet the National Registry doesn't hold as much weight. It just kind of is a nice thing, shows up on a tourist map with that. There are rules that, as a building owner of downtown, that we still have to follow, so it's not like I can just come in and tear down the building or change the face of it, that that still has to go through the Planning Commission. So with that is, has these elected officials, and that's what's important to us, is as the town changes and becomes more progressive, less progressive, however that is, is that it's the elected officials that are on the Planning Commission that we feel would keep the downtown area consistent with what the kind of design format is. So what we're looking at is that if this is something that really wants to go through, we would say, I am opposed to it fully. But if that is something, and with this being the first reading, something maybe for the council to consider would be adding more elected officials to the Landmark Commission to also kind of give that same thing, to add building owners, so people who own buildings in downtown Stoughton to be on the Landmarks Commission, to make that a certain appointment, pointed slot, so that they have a say in what's going on there. And that would be about, I'd recommend, three instead of just elected officials would be a nice counter to that. So that's all I have to say. Are there any questions of me? I don't know if that's still included in my time, Mayor, but otherwise, I appreciate everyone's time to listen and talk today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Matt, you would have three minutes as well. And just, just so you know, it's not a two-way conversation, so we wouldn't ask questions, but during the course of deliberations, any of the points you make could come up if they so choose. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'm Matt Heitman, current resident. I own about five buildings downtown, too. Also a Realtor. I guess, I just want to express, I second what he said. You know, I agree with him, all the points that he made. My biggest concern is, you know, I have seen in the past different clients that have gone to look at certain home, or certain buildings downtown, find out that they're, you know, have governance by the landmark and be turned away by that, you know, to know that there's additional cost in trying to keep that building looking a certain way and using certain materials is actually a detriment, more so than an added benefit for most of the buyers that I've, you know, dealt with. And my concern is having a large district like that, that also is including, like, buildings are from nineteen forties or fifties, and that there's going to be a stringent overlay from the Landmark Commission that might not have been there if it had just gone through the Planning Commission. So, you know, the last thing I want to see is what we saw after the recession, to where we have buildings that are empty, that are, you know, going, you know, not being maintained, and, you know, with higher interest rates and us likely heading back into a recessionary environment, the last thing we want to do is put stringent overlays so that the buildings can't be updated effectively at an effective cost. So that would be my concern.
All right. Thank you. All right, and that's the end of the public comment. Communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members? Seeing none. Okay. Jean's got her hand up. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you, Mayor. I so appreciate the comments by Jordan and the other gentleman. I think his name was Matt. Thank you for speaking to that. I'd just like to flush out just a little more information, that it's not about the landmarks taking over downtown, but rather, it's that the downtown be designated a local historic district. And we've done lots of education on the difference between a national and a local historic district, and the hope is to try to keep the amazing character of our downtown, those buildings. And, I mean, there's a few examples of when you don't have a locally protected building, how like nineteen sixties black slate can go on a historic building and take away that character. So I think excellent points were raised about even appointing more Alders to the Landmarks Commission. I think that the guidelines are meant to try to retain and help save these historic structures. And yes, there are times where business and that come into conflict, and it really needs good guidance. But I would encourage us to look wholly at this and not just from that type of perspective, but rather, how can we keep developing this jewel and keep it growing? And I think there are ways that if we become a historic district, it will be even better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other communications from council members? Okay, seeing none.
I guess I just want to give a shout out to the WSTO for winning two awards. So I think that is fantastic, and give them a round of applause.
Okay. That's good. All right. Any other communications?
I have one very quickly. I'd just like to thank the mayor and WSTO for the, I guess they're about thirty-minute summaries of our meetings, and they're a great way to do a double check on the meeting, and I think it's a nice thing that we can refer other people to for a quick summary of our meetings. It's actually very thorough, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Which app are you watching it on?
Probably YouTube.
Okay. They're on multiple apps, if you...
No, I... Yeah. Oh, I don't know. I probably just go in through Chrome, and I just, I don't know. I just travel there.
Okay. All right.
Just wedge that in. That's all right.
Thank you for that. Okay. We'll move on. I do have a quick presentation. I'll go through here. And let me look on it here, and last time I tried to do this, it didn't want to share the whole thing, so we'll see how it goes today on Zoom. So I'm going to share my screen. If it doesn't advance, those of you that are on Zoom, let me know, and I'll manually advance it. How's that sound? So you should be seeing my first slide here. And what I'm going to do is just give a quick overview of where we're at for population here in Stoughton right now. And can you see the slide with the graphs on it?
Yeah.
Okay. So this slide here demonstrates kind of some history of growth here in Dane County, and you can see that we had significant amount of growth here from nineteen seventy to the year two thousand in the county. We had a one point two nine percent growth in population. In Stoughton, we far exceeded that, so that's when most of our growth was. In fact, over forty-seven percent of our growth was between the years in nineteen seventy-eight and two thousand. Since then, here in Stoughton, our growth has been less than the county average. But as you might remember, last year, we had one of our better years here in growth for a long time, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. This slide here shows housing starts, so these are basically building permits that are pulled on new construction. And you can see kind of where we were in Dane County in the early two thousands. You know, we were getting about, I don't know, twenty-five hundred a year. And then obviously during, you know, the recession years, that went down significantly. And it's starting to creep a little back up. It's evened off here the last several years. But as you can see, we're still far below now where we were back in early two thousands in Dane County. And the reason that's a challenge is because more people have been coming to Dane County in the last ten years, if, as you've heard me say on multiple occasions, that thirty percent of the total statewide growth has occurred here in Dane County in the last ten years, but the number of housing units going up has not kept up with pace. This is a breakdown of Stoughton population, so when we were founded in eighteen fifty, there were seventy people in Stoughton. And then I kind of have it by the decade here on the left, and those can be kind of verified through the census. And then on the right, I kind of broke it down the last several years. Where there's a star next to it, those are just estimates, because the census is done every ten years, and that's when we get the official number. But you can see, you know, during the last census, you know, we grew one hundred and thirteen people from basically the year before. And, you know, from twenty twenty to twenty-ten here, it looks like we grew about five hundred and sixty-two people, which isn't too bad considering that the birth rates have been down, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Other census information that you might find interesting in twenty twenty, the percentage of people living in Stoughton that are white actually went up about a percent and a half in the last ten years. So certainly, you know, there's an opportunity there for more diversity in our community. And the breakdown changes a little bit, and some of the way they're categorized has changed, too. So that kind of affects it, but really, you know, what you really see is, is really the number of Caucasians has gone up here in Stoughton. And then I did put a slide in here that talks about affordable housing definitions, and certainly, that's something that we talk about here often. On the next slide, it kind of goes into the, the area medium income a little bit more and kind of breaks down Stoughton as of twenty twenty-one. I don't have twenty twenty-two numbers yet. But you'll see as we go through the slides that even though we feel like in Stoughton, costs are high, we're relatively affordable to other neighboring communities here in Dane County, and that's true whether it's single-family homes or if it's rental units. We're kind of on the lower end with our surrounding communities, especially those that are in Dane County. If you compare ourselves to McFarland in Oregon, you can see that, you know, their medium home sale price is, is over three fifty, where ours is under three hundred right now. But three hundred and climbing, basically, is what's going on everywhere. So relatively speaking, you know, the further you get from the capital, typically, the more affordable the homes are, and that's true here in Stoughton. The next several slides are slides that I received from the school district. They took some information. We had worked with a consultant and generated some information. And you can see that one of the things that happened is, is not only in Stoughton, but really statewide, is we had an aging population here in the last ten years during the census. We aged two years, and I, sometimes I feel like I age more than that. But certainly here, as well as Dane County and the state, people are getting older, not younger. The median age went up as well, about a year. And then our total population was about five hundred and forty-seven on this one. The numbers vary a little bit depending on the sources and the timing, but it's pretty consistent with what the census had had on the previous slide. And then you can see in Stoughton that out of all the five hundred and forty-seven people, that five hundred and two of it were people that were sixty-five and older, so, you know, that's where we aged. One of the other things the school district looks at when they do enrollment projections is they look at, you know, different things that occur. So this shows you from in the last twelve years, how the population in the school district has dropped by like three hundred and forty students, or five hundred and forty-nine students. Seventeen percent of their student population had dropped here in the last twelve years, basically.
Yeah, but is that because of open enrollment and kids are going elsewhere?
It's a combination of things. It's a combination of birth rates going down. It's a combination of our community getting older, and it is some to do with open enrollment. There are open enrollment numbers if, typically, are between a hundred and a hundred and fifty kids a year. Pretty consistent. It goes up a little bit here and there. It's about one out of every five students in the district open and rolls out for various reasons. So certainly, that's one of the initiatives that the school district is looking to improve upon. And this is the one that shows the birth rates. So you can see since two thousand, the average number of births have gone down, you know, basically twenty-four percent in the last ten years when this was done. So what's happening is, is that if you look on this chart here, you can see that the incoming kindergarten class, there's basically, the class sizes are smaller than the outgoing graduating classes because of the birth rates. So that's an area where, when we say, well, we need to figure out ways to have young families come to Stoughton, that's why, because if the graduating classes are larger than the incoming, then their enrollment's going to go down. And in order to have a healthy city, we need to have a healthy school district and vice versa. So, you know, one of the things that, you know, we want to do is, is, you know, have common goals, and I think one of the common goals would be to, you know, have all different types of people come to Stoughton, but particularly, you know, see what we can do to level the curve on the declining enrollment and on the, on the aging population.
But, okay, so I, every year I have an argument with you.
I wouldn't call it an argument. It's a discussion.
It's a discussion. People are having less kids, but they're also waiting longer. So your generation time has gotten wider. Kids, you know, when we were younger, and we're aging ourselves, with the older population now, as opposed to the... They were having kids at eighteen, nineteen years old. Now people are waiting until thirty, thirty-five years old. That's almost, you're skipping a whole generation. And so how are you going to, you're never going to catch up to what you were before, ever. And so you, you need to start thinking of a new way to create Stoughton in a way that you, you're not just building more houses to attract young families, because they might be twenty years old, but they still might wait ten years old to have a kid. So you're not solving the problem by building more houses. All you're doing is wrecking farmland and, you know, growing a city that, the majority of people that moved here, remember our survey and our court plan, so that the reason why they moved here is because they didn't want population guys to grow drastically. Yes, we need to figure out a way to keep our schools healthy, but I am never going to be in for of just keep building, building, building to fill the schools, because then we'll be reaching McFarland in Oregon just to fill schools. Okay, then I had my say.
Okay. And the only thing I would respond to it is, yes, people are, are waiting longer to start their families. The other thing that's happening is they're also waiting longer to purchase their homes for various reasons, maybe because they are focusing on paying off their student loans, or they're focusing on starting their family or their career. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So, you know, I think that this is something that, you know, we've seen in other communities where, where they have grown and they have, you know, they're building schools. We're not in a position, you know, to build schools because they're overcrowded or anything like that. So we have room in our existing facilities, and I do think that we have a responsibility to, you know, do what we can to help support the school district and vice versa. So, you know, I think we can have a deeper dive into this at some point. I know the school district will, will continue to update their numbers. I'll go briefly through what we have going on. You all probably know what we have going on in developments. Fifty-one West, obviously, the first apartment unit has a roof on it. They do have approval for the site plan for the second unit. I'm not really sure when the start date of that's going to be. We also, several of the duplexes here in Orange are, are being built as we speak, so those are coming together now. And then obviously, the, the park has been dedicated, the trails are, are completed, and we're looking on doing connections to the north and doing some work on the very south end of Virgin Lake this year. This is kind of a picture of the two apartments that are going to be there. This one here is kind of an aerial of the site to kind of give you a broader view, as well as you can see the Stoughton Trailers property off in the distance here, which is the next slide. Those Stoughton Trailers, we're in the process of doing the comprehensive plan amendment. I think we have a date scheduled for that at the Plan Commission, so certainly, council members are welcome to come then and learn more about the development. In the first phase, the plan is for them to start the headquarters. And you can see on this land that, you know, there's quite a bit of stormwater dedication that needs to be done on site. And then there's opportunities for some commercial, some single families, some multi-unit, and then some flex space, which hasn't really been determined yet. As we get closer to doing the zoning and the plating, we'll probably get into more conversations with the Plan Commission and the council on what this development might look like. This is Kettle Park West. There's about a dozen homes that are being built right now, and they just continue to move along. Magnolia Springs, you might recall, the preliminary plat has been approved, and we're still waiting for, for the final plat approval. They had some conditions that they're looking to meet, so this one can go forward. So we're hoping that this one will start this year. These will be what we would call starter homes. There's still, the price range is to be determined, but it's probably going to be three hundred and fifty thousand in north, would be my guess, which, you know, seems like a lot. So really, what we're seeing right now in the homes is you're seeing something that seems really difficult to attain, and then you're seeing quite a few rental properties, especially in other communities here in Dane County. I was in Verona last week, and they have probably three times as many projects going on as we do as far as a single family, but really, quite a few multi-units going all over town, surrounding of Verona right now. And I know other municipalities are kind of having the same type of conversations as we are. Riverfront Development, we're still doing a financial gap analysis, so we're going to talk a little bit about that in closed session tonight. Stonecrest, this is out on the end of Racetrack Road, kind of over by Stoughton Trailers on Highway A. And we're going through some processes with them for approval. And I think their plan would be, would be to start out in this first phase, it says phase three, but it would be phase one of this particular part of the development. So you'll be hearing more about that here in the next several months. This is a spreadsheet I put together that basically shows, based on what we have projected. Now, these numbers can change from year to year. They were based on what we projected. Sometimes things get built on time. Sometimes permits get pulled in a year before things actually get built. But this kind of gives you an idea of, based on what's been approved, including, I put Magnolia Springs in here just because we had the plat approved. Does not include Stoughton Trailers or the Stonecrest development. But based on that, and the, kind of the industry standards for single-family population and students that I received from the school district, I plugged those into the spreadsheet, into the formula, and it can kind of project out how many students you could anticipate coming out of these developments, as well as the population increase. And so that's what this one represents, and I just kind of use this as a guide so I can kind of understand where we're going. And this is the type of information that we share with the school district to kind of keep them in the loop of what's going on, so they can make their decisions based on not only their data, but ours as well. And then for us, obviously, the way our operational budget works, it's based on the net new construction. So the law changed back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, and we can only grow our budget based on whatever new property values we, we gain through construction. And you can see that basically where it says additional, that's the amount that we're able to raise our levy for our budget. And it's, last year, we grew at two point four three percent, which was our highest since this is being tracked. Normally, our average is at one point six one, which is right about at the state average, is one point six oh. You can see in Dane County, it's been averaging two point five one, which is very similar to where we were last year. If you take Fitchburg out of twenty twenty-two, we would have been exactly at the state, at the county average, would have been two point four three as well. So we're kind of on pace now with the rest of the county. Obviously, there's some outliers. Fitchburg would be the biggest one. Some of the other communities kind of have streaky growth. Verona would be one of them. Sun Prairie certainly is one of them. Wanakee, Windsor, the forest area. Lot of the, and now we're seeing Cottage Grove as well. A lot of the municipalities along the interstate have been growing at a rapid pace, and I would think that will probably continue. And then this chart here just kind of breaks down all the new TIFs that were created last year, and you can kind of see, you know, most of them were based on, let's see if I can see it here. Were kind of the, the mixed use was over, it was fifty-five percent. Mixed use is typically what we would see out of Kettle Park West or possibly out at Stoughton Trailers. And then the, the blighted areas and the rehab areas or industrial areas are tend to be in what we call brownfields or redevelopment areas. And then there's a couple... And then there's a couple other that really don't accumulate much at all, but you can see it's about just over fifty-fifty. Um, and that's been the trend is that obviously with the prices of everything going up and then the requirements for stormwater management plans increasing, there's been more requests in the last several years for TIF assistance for these mixed-use developments. And then some of the commercial buildings we can anticipate completion this year would be Emmy Roth, uh, they're on schedule, they're hoping to be completed in July. Um, the Popeye's Chicken, um, is expected to be built out by Dunkin' Donuts. And then the Pizza Hut building is anticipated that that building will be removed and replaced with a three-unit building, which will house, uh, these businesses listed on the screen. And then also the Gingerbread Preschool will be building the new facility, um, out near the Business Park North. So that's all I had tonight. It certainly would take any questions that you might have. The PowerPoints in the packet, if you want to refer to it later and ask me questions later, I'm fine with that, too. This is something I've been trying to do at least, I think, the last three or four years is to give an update. Usually I give it in February. Um, the agendas were kind of heavy, so I was kind of hold off till tonight so you guys wouldn't be here all night listening to me when we had other business to take care of. I appreciate your time. Sure, no problem. Any questions? All right, we'll move into our agenda. Dave's going to do an update quickly on the, uh, on Greenspire.
An email went out to the council members about four-thirty today, and for those who are present, you got physical copies of that same, uh, item. Long and short of it, uh, the Stoughton Housing Authority has agreed with Crown Court Properties to sell the three buildings to them for, uh, rehabilitation projects totaling seven-point-five million dollars, uh, including low-income house tax credits. So assuming that the WEDC, uh, gives the Stoughton Housing Authority those grants and we're anticipating in May, uh, the sale will go forward. Bottom line, uh, we'll be selling the property to that LLC. They'll do seven-point-five million in, uh, repairs and fifteen years later they'll give back the buildings back to us. So I didn't want to overload you with details, but I wanted to be, uh, make you aware of what's happening. But, uh, if you have any questions now, you can ask, or in the future, uh, please feel to ask me.
I would just say, you know, kudos to, to Dave and the members of the Housing Authority. They've been meeting weekly for the last couple of months and it's been kind of a rollercoaster ride to get to this point. Alder Person Hunt?
I would just add a couple of things to, uh, that I thought were significant. The, uh, the housing units will remain low-income senior housing. So the nature of the neighborhood will not change, uh, a great deal, and it'll still be available for seniors. Also, uh, the reason this is so beneficial is right now, I think I've been on the Housing Authority, uh, probably four or five years, and we've managed to get about twenty units remodeled and we have seventy-three to go. Plus there's a great deal of community area needs, including the roofs and elevators and the, uh, the fire system is pretty, uh, out of date. So all of these things will get updated. Uh, the, the pace at which it will be done will probably be relatively quick because the credits are issued based on the amount of dollars of renovation that have been completed. So the LLC will want to make good time on the renovations. And then if you take a look at fifteen years from now, the, the quality and condition of the buildings should still be pretty good. Uh, the roofs will be half their age, uh, the, the fire system, the elevators, all those will have a lot of life left in them. Some things, of course, will have already reached an age that is not real beneficial, carpeting, for instance, in some units will probably be pretty old already. But, uh, all things considered, it, uh, supplied what was a badly needed method for getting these units renovated. So I think it's a, a good idea.
President Hirsch?
I just have a question, maybe Dave or whoever's been on the committee. So when you renovate, um, a unit that is occupied, what happens to those tenants while it's being occupied? And how would we, you know, if they're low-income or seniors, how are we assured that they're being not displaced in the community?
The contract with Crown Point Properties, uh, requires that the residents, uh, be kept as close as possible to Stoughton as reasonably allowed based upon the housing market, and they pay the costs. So they've got an incentive to get it done as soon as possible because they're paying, uh, rent at another facility while that occurs.
So you move some people out of their apartments into a new apartment with all their belongings, renovate and then move them back? Is that how it goes?
Well, that's what we've been doing currently, um, just keeping a rental unit vacant. The anticipation here is they would actually potentially be moved to other apartment buildings, uh, so that based upon availability. And, uh, as the mayor mentioned, you know, it's possible that people may want to just move in with family members, you know, so we're giving them that discretion. But, um, Cindy McGlynn was, uh, very conscientious about wanting to make this as seamless as possible for the residents.
Yeah, and the other type of improvements they're going to make is not only will everything, you know, be new, but it'll be ADA accessible, wider doorways, um, you know, safer bathrooms, things like that. So, you know, it, it'll be great in the long run and the goal is to really minimize the impact on the residents, obviously. That's a huge concern for all of us. And, you know, it'll be on a case-by-case basis. Um, some individuals might be able to move into a vacant unit, have it remodeled, move back. It really depends on when they get started. Some will choose to move in with family members and maybe put things in storage. Others may find another place and they'll be responsible for helping them do that. So, um, certainly for everybody involved, that's, it's a major, a major deal. We certainly are going to do everything we can to get that right, but recognizing that, you know, there is a shortage in places. So, um, that'll be, you know, a, a big sense of urgency to do what we can to, to take care of the folks that live there.
What about the current, um, employees that work there? Are they being displaced or current managers of the buildings?
The contract specifies that Broihand Management, who we've been using for years, will continue as the management company unless the Housing Authority grants permission to change.
Okay.
And we really even had to go as far as to find another attorney that specializes in these kind of, um, you know, these kind of programs in order to, to get the language done. Matt took us as far as he could go, um, but he certainly, you know, doesn't have quite the level of expertise in this area. So he was able to find and recommend somebody that could help us through the process to make sure that we could get the language as tight as we could to minimize that impact.
Thank you guys for every, all the work that you've done.
You're welcome.
All right. That takes us to the consent agenda. It looks like we have a couple items in there that would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by President Hirsch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher. Would anybody like anything acted on separately on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, uh, ordinance four twenty-twenty-three is a first reading, and this is coming from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. It's ordinance four of twenty-twenty-three, amending chapter seventy-dash-three-twenty-two of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code, establishing a thirty-five mile per hour restriction on Rutland Dun Town Mine Road, both directions for a distance of one-hundred, one-thousand-nine-hundred feet from the western edge of U.S. Highway fifty-one right of way. And, uh, this is first reading, public safety recommended on a six-zero vote.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, anything you want to add, Director Scheel? Okay, Alder may ask you as a question.
This is, is, what does the town of, uh, Rutland think about it?
We've gained a letter of support from them, I believe it's actually in the packet as well, but we did, we didn't engage with them prior to making this recommendation.
So this is basically the stretch from fifty-one that goes in toward the new entrance to the development.
Right.
Which we probably want them to slow down there anyway because there's a stop sign there.
I was just curious as to.
Yeah.
The town was.
Yep, and the township has been very supportive of, of the project and we've had a nice working relationship with them. We hope that continues. Eventually there'll be a roundabout at this intersection that's scheduled to be done in twenty-twenty-six. You know, I think some have tried.
Yeah, they did.
I see parts all over, so. Any questions or comments?
I've just got one quick question. I'm just curious, was this stretch, did it have a posted speed limit sign on it previously?
I believe it was forty-five miles per hour on the town segment. Part of this is being done because it'll assist in reducing the design speed for the approach to the roundabout that was just mentioned. And ergo it'd also reduce the adverse impacts to the properties on the north side of, uh, that segment, um, those houses that will yet remain. This will reduce the impact because the speed reduction will lessen the impact by design.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so this one will be back at the next council meeting. Uh, if anything comes up between now and then, feel free to email myself or, uh, Director Scheel on this one. Uh, next item is R thirty-eight of twenty-twenty-three, and this one here, this one went through CACP and Park and Rec. Not really sure who wants to introduce it. Could be Alder Vanegas, you want to do that? If not. Otherwise we can have.
I'm here, but my hands are full.
Okay, all right, we'll have Alder Takowski do it then, if you could.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, hang on, um, I can't actually see this at the moment, but I'm getting there. This is, this is thirty-eight. Okay. Well, it's not, I'm sorry, but it's not coming up for me here, so.
I can have somebody here do it. President Hirsch will introduce it.
Thanks, Joyce, for trying. It's R thirty-eight twenty-twenty-three, resolution by the common council of the City of Stoughton, approving the name of the shelter in Inglesons Woods Park as Alliance Club.
Second. Second by Alder Jensen.
And I think this was brought up in finance today. The Lions Club has donated, what, fifteen thousand dollars, which is half the cost of the shelter. And so that kind of equals the naming rights, or they have the opportunity of naming rights when they, you know, donate a, a large portion of the cost of something. Going through both, well, CACP, Park and Recs and.
Finance.
Technically, finance is a different resolution, uh, amending the budget, so that was not put as time-sensitive, so that'll come next meeting.
All right, I just heard it when I was here.
Yeah, this one's just for naming, that's all.
Okay, so this is just for the naming, not for the budget amendment?
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one?
Just one, I think, um, in CACP, I think we did raise the question about, um, you know, if there was a cost overrun, um, if it ended up being forty thousand. I think we had wished that, you know, wanted to be sure that Lions Club was on board with, you know, any increased funding. So I don't know that that changes anything as far as the, but I'm not sure that's reflected in the resolution, but.
Uh, Director Glenn, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. So, yeah, I haven't had any, I haven't had any conversations with the Lions Club since then, but, uh, with that, when I initially met with them and, you know, we were sculpted up the project, they were willing to do more, so I would assume that they'd be okay with a little bit of adjustment if, you know, getting a bit, a little bit higher than what is budgeted, um, as far as that goes. And then, uh, it's a really rough budget cost estimate because it's coming from a master plan, not really engineering, um, engineer, you know, probable cost of construction estimates. So it, it could go up or down a little bit, but it's probably going to fit right in there. It's a prefab shelter, um, so it's really just, you know, putting it together, it's not like a custom design or anything. And, um, so I'm pretty comfortable with that number, I guess, even at this, that stage.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any other, any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Uh, next item was, uh, finance earlier, R thirty-nine, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, R thirty-nine twenty-twenty-three is a resolution to amend the twenty-twenty-three adopted budget for ARPA funds to purchase an ambulance for the EMS. So moved.
Second by Alder Jensen, Alder Schumacher.
Um, in finance, we discussed what the, kind of more the specific numbers of it. Uh, this was originally decided during a committee of the whole meeting of, um, ARPA use, which I'm seeing a, seeing one title in the, in the header. We have APRA funds instead of ARPA fund, but not a big deal. So this is, uh, the, the EMS had, had a grant, had grant dollars from the state, uh, and this is making up the balance for the purchase of that ambulance.
Right, and this one was also a committee of the whole, wasn't it?
Yep.
But the price went down. So now we approved three hundred thousand, so this is a cost saving for us because they got their grant.
Right, at council of, or committee of the hall, uh, the language was three hundred thousand less the grant proceeds.
Yep.
And we looked it up for this resolution.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, yep. Yep, thank you very much. Uh, next item also came to finance for clarification and direction, so we put it on, uh, for council as well, and I'll let Alder Person Schumacher walk us through this one.
Resolution forty of twenty-twenty-three, uh, during finance, we decided that we, we wanted the opportunity to talk about ARPA dollars, uh, in a committee of the whole meeting, so we did not take any action on this resolution. And moved it instead to, um, a future committee of the whole meeting.
So I think, you know, the options will be at the committee of the whole, whether or not to fund it through ARPA, yes or no. If it's no, then it would probably come back through here, and you'd have to decide if you want to amend the twenty twenty-three budget in order to fund it. Is that kind of where you're at?
Well, I'm going to take direction from committee of the whole, you know. We've got the further complication that, right now, the twenty-two budget indicated sixty-five thousand, but Public Works has indicated the amount should be ninety thousand, so I don't even know the dollar amount that the committee of the whole wants to do.
Yeah, like I said, when we discussed this earlier, the committee of the whole meeting is, I think, what, April sixth?
Correct.
And then we can put this on the spreadsheet. I think that the.
It's actually on the spreadsheet already.
And so I guess there was some miscommunication back in twenty twenty-two about how it got awarded as funding. I think it was placeholder, but I don't think we ever approved it.
Well, see, that's the confusion, because when the departments submitted their request sometime during twenty-one, it was for sixty-five thousand using ARPA funds. The C I P, as part of the budget adoption in November twenty-one, included the sixty-five thousand for this project and indicated grant funds. We don't know what grant funds they are, but because the C I P is part of the budget adoption, right now, my interpretation is that the council has approved sixty-five thousand, and that's why we're asking for clarification. And the committee requested that this get back to the committee of the whole so that could get ironed out for clarification as to what they want to do.
And Director Abir, I don't know if you can provide any more insight on it?
Yeah, we, so it wasn't a twenty twenty-two on the C I P list. However, it was never intended to be essentially borrowed for. The understanding was that these were ARPA funds, but we did hold off on any work on that, on that project because we had heard that the ARPA was going back to committee of the whole sometime in twenty twenty-two, so we did do anything in twenty-two itself. And then we resubmitted our ask for additional twenty-five thousand to bring us to ninety thousand, based on some bids, or not bids, but some quotes we got back from different sign vendors. The digital components are very expensive, but ninety thousand is where we need to be, unless we scaled back and did not do some digital amenities to it.
Okay. And just so you know, Brett, there was some question looking for clarification at Finance. Is this for one sign, or is it multiple signs? And do you have a location selected if, if this were to get approved?
Yep, this is for three signs. Essentially, we're looking to do one on fifty-one on the north side of town, one near one thirty-eight and fifty-one, and then one on the, the far east side of town. I've had some preliminary discussions with some developers actually about potentially some, some land to put these on. We also have some public property, and some of the developments towards Roby are potentially in play. So what we'll do is, if this does move forward, we would put together a plan to, they'll submit to the council or committee of the whole to decide where these need to go. I've also had some discussion on the east side with some property owners about, because there's actually a sign right now, whether or not, on the east side that we can potentially put in that spot.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. Anybody else have any questions? So I don't know if we need to take action, or if you guys want to.
There's no recommendation from Finance.
Yeah, I mean, you can still take action without a recommendation, but if you're okay with, with just sending it back to the committee of the whole, that's what we'll do. Is that what you guys want to do?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the next item, and that one is R forty-one of twenty twenty-three. And that one, the next several came from personnel, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to Alder Person Reeves. How's that sound?
Thank you, Mayor. Authorizing and direct, I'm sorry, this is Resolution R forty-one twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve the fire department assistant fire chief position description, and I so move.
Second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Reeves?
Well, we have the chief here, but my recollection is, as he has been looking at personnel needs and duties, he wanted to develop some job descriptions that provided some accountability about who does what and ownership of some of those responsibilities, but Chief, you may have something to add?
Yeah, so we, we're working on some promotion processes because we've had some retirements in both the captains and the assistant chief positions, and we really didn't have any, any job descriptions at all to run a process with, so we're slowly working our way through. So this was the first, first two that we absolutely had to have because we had nothing written down for it, so. We'll be, we're working on reviewing some of the other job descriptions and organization and all of that, and we're going to start marching through that as we go on.
And there's no fiscal impact to these next couple of job descriptions?
All right. Any questions or comments? And I think, you know, what Josh is trying to do here in his department is just really, like you said, have accountability, have some consistency when it comes to training and supervision and those types of things, so I totally support what he's trying to do there. And we're fortunate that we still have, you know, the majority of our firefighters are volunteers. And, you know, that's becoming a challenge statewide as well as volunteerism, so we certainly, you know, are always accepting applications for fire and EMS for volunteers. If anybody out there is, is interested, you can talk to Josh or Lisa about that. There's your plug. Any questions on this first one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next one is R forty-two.
All right, R forty-two twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the fire department fire captain's position description. Personnel also recommended approval four zero and three six, no fiscal impact, and I would move for approval.
Second. Second by Jensen. Go ahead, Lisa.
This is, I would say, the same process, just a different position description.
All right. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next one is R forty-three of twenty twenty-three, Alder Person Reeves.
R forty-three twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the public works athletic facility superintendent position description. Personnel also recommended approval four zero and three six, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Schumacher. Alder Person Reeves?
And I know we have Director Abir on the line, so this also was previously approved by council, the funding for this position. It was a matter of getting the job duties in an official position description, but Director Abir, maybe you'd like to add something?
Yep, sure. Yeah, this, this position is, is, has to do with a structural change that we've made in our, our parks maintenance area. So this position will be solely responsible for all the baseball, softball, turf fields, as well as the trails and trail maintenance. They'd be responsible for the turf program, all of our, our treatments that we do to the turf. They would also coordinate all maintenance with user groups. Actually, just Monday night, we had a, yeah, last night, we had a meeting with user groups that use these facilities and the maintenance that's expected of them, and also what they can expect from us. They'd also help to plan and implement different C I Ps for facility maintenance and trail maintenance as we go forward. As you've seen in some of the slides earlier today, with all the development happening, we're starting to plan for, you know, taking care of these spaces. The trail network that Dan's put together is fantastic. We just need to make sure that we're maintaining it and doing our part.
All right. Any questions for Director Abir? President Hirsch?
Brett, I have a question. Under duties and responsibilities, I was just, because this is the, the lead position for the park maintenance, right? I was just wondering if you saw that maybe we could put in, just because years ago, the, this position or the like position actually attended a lot of the Park and Recs committee meetings, or at least, you know, kind of brought us in when they were going to update equipment or whatever. Is there a way that we could add in duties and responsibilities to, for this position to make sure that any updates in field layouts are in line with the park master plan? And that any, you know, perceived changes comes to, you know, the director of Parks and Recs and/or the Parks and Rec Committee? Just so that we have that overlap? I mean, we used to have a nice overlap when you first started, and then it kind of waned, and now I'm just trying to figure out how to get it back.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. And just to let you know as well, all of our C I Ps, we work with, with Dan on, so we put those together as a collective. And so this position is not going to be creating C I Ps. They make recommendations to myself and to Dan, and then we would carry those, those forward.
Okay.
But, yep, go ahead.
So should we put that in there, that it coordinates, you know, any park changes, you know, any changes has to be following the park master plan and/or changes with Park and Recs or something like that?
Yeah, we can certainly put something like that, that in there, but we definitely, like I, like I said, any parks planning type things would come from Dan. These are really enhancements to the, the current facilities. But, but yeah, we could certainly put something in there to, to tie all that together, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If you're already doing it, it'd be nice to actually have it in there, duties and responsibilities upfront.
Sure. Yep, understood.
Thanks.
Yep.
So do I have to make that motion going forward?
You could make an amendment to that effect if you'd like, so it's on record.
Sure, I, I make a motion, well, the approve with the following amendment to, under duties and responsibilities. Don't know the exact language that Brett, you want to use, but coordinates with Park and Recs director and follows the park maintenance plan and design, and any maintenance and upgrades.
Okay.
And I think Brett and Dan can probably massage that language and get it to candy.
Yeah, Reggie, I can send you the language too, and let you see it before I send it in.
All right.
If, if you're making that change, I'd like to see it also before we vote on this. I, I understand where you're going, but it's ambiguous to me. I think it's, it's, it's over. The command structure is already there. It's not, it's not, I don't believe it's necessary, this, this extra, this extra description. And I think in some ways, it will have unforeseen consequences and possibly hamstringing position in the future when it comes to, you know, if, if they must follow these plans to the letter.
Okay, or maybe update the master plan, but I want them just according with Park and Recs.
That, that, that's already being done. That should be done through the director of parks. That's his job. And, and this, this position is underneath him. It's a chain of command. He's a staff person that goes to it, and then director of parks is, is to staff the, the committee, and that's the conduit that he needs to go through. You're, you're starting to, you're starting to dissipate authority and, and communication lines.
Actually, I was trying to bring them together.
I know.
Because, because there actually has been problems where they're not.
Then that problem lies in the structure within the department, not with this. We shouldn't have to write that part out. We shouldn't have to tell them step by step on each position that you must follow this person, you must give this recommendation.
No, because in here.
Time out. Before we go any further, we have a motion.
My point is.
We need a second, is what I'm getting to.
My point is, is that I, I won't support this until I can see better, better understanding and better, better language.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Alder Person Hunt. So now we can continue the conversation.
Can I add something quick?
Sure.
So this, this position would make recommendations to myself. This person is actually under the, the parks maintenance supervisor. The parks maintenance supervisor is then under me, and that follows that chain of command, if you will, to, to me. And then Dan and I talk about C I Ps starting very shortly here in, you know, May, June, to bring forward to the committee of the whole. And that through the C I P committee, I should say, through that process. So that, that's, that's the chain of command, if you will, is that this person, if they see something in the field that needs to be corrected, that we would bring that forward as a C I P and it make those changes through the budget.
So I would ask President Hirsch, are you, is your motion limited to the C I P?
No, I mean.
So I guess what's the, maybe?
Well, I guess my intent was, and that goes back to my first question to you, Brett, and maybe there was a miscommunication. I asked if this, because I know there's all these new position descriptions and titles, I'd asked you if this is the, the, the top guy, and you said yes, and that's where I think it was, you didn't say, there is a, a person above him. I, I don't know the structure of Park and Public Works, and so if there's a.
Yeah, we, we, we turned in the org chart when we sent this in. Obviously, they make the packet, but that, that is a structure. Sorry, I didn't understand the question, I guess, but this person does report to the parks supervisor, parks maintenance supervisor. The parks maintenance supervisor reports to me.
Right, so that's, I thought this was because all these names are changing, all these position descriptions. That's what was my initial question. Is he the, the guy that reports? I should have been though, because that's the person that is where I wanted the, the change.
It should be in that job description, is what you're suggesting.
Yes, that's where the job description, what I was talking about, should be.
In the job description, does it, does it say that they report to the parks maintenance supervisor? I thought so. If that's not the case, then that needs to, to change. They, they report to the parks maintenance supervisor.
As director of public works, I believe.
Okay, if that's, if that, that needs to, to change.
Yeah. So that's where I was confused about. It sounded like he was right underneath you.
I understand the confusion. I can send you an org chart as well on how that's all put together, but yeah, that, that changed, you know, if you recommend it, would need to happen, is that they report to the parks maintenance supervisor.
Right, so the parks maintenance supervisor is the one that, that position, if that ever comes back up, is where I was hoping to insert that language. So I would, well, withdraw the language because I did not have the right, because it said Public Works, and then it said you, so the.
Yep, I apologize. Yep, that's a, that should be the parks maintenance supervisor.
Yeah. So I think procedurally, you're right. Yeah. So I think procedurally, we're actually supposed to vote on the amendment.
Well, no, no, I haven't tried.
It belongs to the floor. It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to the floor by Robert's rules, even though it's silly that it does. So if you're okay with just changing the header, then you could just vote down the amendment, and then we'll go back to the motion. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Then all in favor of the amendment, say aye. And then those, and then those opposed?
No.
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 So the amendment would fail. So it'll go back to the original motion, and I think the intent is just to change the reports to. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll do that. And then any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. All right, we got that fixed.
Thanks, Tom, for bringing, because that's where I was, I thought he was the second in command.
I apologize for that.
But thanks for bringing that up. I would have overstepped if I knew where the person was on the total poll.
We got it figured out. That's what counts. So next item is R 44.
Thank you. R 44, 2023, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve the Public Works Office Manager Position Description. Personnel recommends approval 40 on 36 and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Reeves?
So this is not a new position. This was, and I will let Director Abir correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but this is a, was previously an administrative assistant position. There's no fiscal impact because council approved the appropriate pay increase some time back. But essentially, it is a job description that more accurately reflects what she is doing and has been doing.
And the real question is, Brett, who does this person report to?
I was just going to say, I was going to get my icebreaker, is that this person does report to me. For sure.
So we'll probably want to add that on there.
Yep.
We're all thinking alike here. Scary.
Yeah, because this person doesn't report to anybody.
It does, no, it does say reports to Director of Public Works.
Does it?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and a whereas. Okay, go ahead, Brett.
It's not on the position description.
Anything you want to add on this one, Brett?
Yeah, I mean, this, as Alder Reeves pointed out, this job description, this more accurately reflects what this person is doing or what's expected of this position. Even if this person was not in the position, this is what we'd expect of the new person as well. This position really does keep the wheels turning, so to speak. They deal with all the accounts payable, invoicing. They are the training coordinator, all social media activities, community outreach. They also manage the cemetery, which, believe it or not, is a pretty big job, and a lot of other duties as assigned as well.
All right. Any questions on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. Next item is coming from Landmarks Commission, and that would be Alder Person Legaki. It's not Alder Person...
Alder Reeves.
Reeves. Why do I always, so sorry.
Well, that's all right.
And you were on there, weren't you?
Alder Person Legaki probably knows more about this than I do. But, so ordinance, and actually on the agenda, I believe it should be ordinance five of 2023, establishing an historic, a historic downtown local district, and Landmarks recommended approval 60 on 39. This is a first reading.
Will Landmarks give a presentation about what that is all going to entail?
Yeah, I think there was a bit of confusion from the, I think, when this was submitted, I think they forgot it was going to be a first reading, so they did not include the presentation. But there will be a presentation on, at the next meeting, and Landmarks Commission representatives will be available. But I had to refresh my memory. So the Landmarks started the local district planning in 2019 with funding from the city. Lakota Group assisted with the community engagement in 2019 and 2020. Landmarks sent out for requests for proposal in late 2020, and started the design guidelines in early 2021. There was a $17,000 grant funding. They subsequently hired McGuire, Iglesky, and Associates to come on board to draft the nomination and create the district. So as I mentioned, the design guidelines are completed now. Unfortunately, they were not included in the packet, and they will be on the 28th. And as I said, there'll be a presentation, and other members of the Landmarks Commission will be here on the 28th. So perhaps those of you that have been in Landmarks, I know, I think Alder Legaki is probably the most recent. If there's anything you want to add as far as that history, or...
Looking forward to the presentation and seeing the design guidelines. There's been a lot of effort behind this, and I know that there's been a lot of education, and I hope we have a good discussion.
The other thing that I might add is that we did have a public hearing. We also had a, the public hearing was just last week, and then on the, I believe it was March 4th, there was a presentation at the library that was pretty well attended, and there was overwhelming support and questions about it. So I was pleasantly surprised by the people that came and were really looking for guidance and appreciated the availability and the knowledge base. So I'm sure we'll talk more about that at the next meeting. But the people that came to those presentations were all in favor, so.
So one question I would ask, and I don't know if you know the answer, Lisa, or if Matt does. So on the design guidelines, Landmarks, do they have the statutory authority on making that decision, or does that have to be approved by the council as well?
Well, you mean, so...
You said they updated the design guidelines?
Well, it has to be, I mean, the council's going to have to approve the local historic downtown district and the guidelines, as I understand.
Okay, because I haven't seen the guidelines.
Right, that's the thing. They are not going to be in the packet until next time.
And I don't know if they presented the guidelines at the public hearing, because that wasn't at the public hearing.
They were available in paper copy. They did not go through the whole document.
Right. Okay. So I guess if we can get an e-copy for the packet, that would be good.
Or update this current packet, because it'd be nice to have it before then.
Yeah, I was recommending that they maybe get it sent out. So if that sounds like a good plan, get it sent out ahead of the next meeting, rather than just with the packet. So I can ask Michael Stacy to do that.
Okay. Alder Person Hunt?
Yeah, rather than mailing it out prior to the next reading, I think the Landmarks presentation should actually be a part of the first reading. So really, tonight doesn't qualify as a first reading.
I agree.
Because we're not really getting the presentation off of which we would formulate our questions and comments. So could we just reintroduce this as a first reading when the Landmark Commission is here to give their presentation?
I guess the question would be from Matt, is the design guidelines, is that, is that actually part of this ordinance, or is that separate to this? I haven't really looked that deep, and I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't looked at that either.
So I think that would be the determining factor, Fred. If the guidelines are separate to the ordinance, and I don't know off the top of my head. Alder Person Jensen?
Could we just, like, say tonight's effort, you know, is not quite qualified as a first reading, and just do a first reading with some of these questions and answers available in that first reading, including the presentation from the Landmark Committee? I don't feel like I know enough, and I'm not getting enough, to really formulate any questions about whether or not this is a good idea off of what we've presented tonight.
I would have to agree, actually, and I posed that question when I saw the packet come out, but to the, so...
Okay. All right, we'll look at that. I have Alder Person Jensen, and then Mijoski.
This will probably be answered then when we get to packet, but I just thought I'd throw it out there anyways. I was wondering, with Mr. Tillison was asserting that there basically would be a blanket thrown over the entire downtown. I wanted to know if that is correct. So in other words, would all the buildings be designated as historic? And what would that do to change the status of the non-contributing buildings? You know, so that's some questions that I'd have. The other thing that they mentioned, too, that I happen to agree with, is I think this is, this is in one way an overreach by the Landmarks. I see it as an overreach, and I'd like to have that addressed so that I'm more comfortable with this.
Yeah, and I think that there's a map, I'm sorry, but I don't know if you were asking me that question, but there's a map in the presentation, so I'm back to thinking, I think we need to, the next meeting perhaps needs to be the first reading, because you don't have the materials.
Yeah, that's what I said. It's probably in the material that it would be coming, but that, those are some of the questions that I would have.
I agree.
Alder Person Mijoski?
I'm not disagreeing with anybody's argument, but basically, this ordinance is to just establish the district. It doesn't necessarily talk about the standards being in there or anything else. That, they're two separate, to me, it's two separate issues. You know, it's like, we're establishing district, and then we're going to establish the operations of that district. It's, it's a chicken and egg thing, to some extent. But according to this, this is just, this is just to establish the actual district. This has the functioning of it.
Because that's the part I have a question, too. It's like, when you establish a district, is there some guidelines that go with that? As soon as you establish it, is there state guidelines that go to that, that then we have to adhere to?
The problem is, then, is if that is considered part of this ordinance, then every time they change any of the standards, they will have to come back and change the ordinance. Is that what you want?
No.
No, no, no. I just...
No, I'm just, that's the question I'm asking. Is that what, is that what the council wants? I doubt it.
Yeah, and I think that the standards, if I remember right, are in chapter 38. So I think...
I think you're correct.
I think that is separate. But certainly, if the desire is to bring it back as the first reading, I don't think it's necessarily time-sensitive. So I don't know if it's worth haggling over. But, you know, we'll do whatever you want. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I also think it would be a good idea to, I'm going to, I'm hoping that Michael Stacy can come, because he has the ordinance and the zoning background. I've only been on this, you know, committee one year, so it's new to me, the process. I mean, the boat had left the dock, and so there's questions that I am not the best person to answer. So I'm hoping he and the other representatives, once you see the packet, can better answer your question.
And as Alder Jensen's question is about overreach, I don't agree it is. But what my understanding of this is, is that what this, what this, it does give further protection to the downtown, and it helps, it helps protect the exterior viewscape of the downtown area. Whereas right now, you know, it doesn't. We don't, you know, we have a, it goes through Planning Commission with an overlay district, and one of the arguments that was made tonight by one of the gentlemen was that, well, you know, there are two people, there are two representatives on, or three representatives on the Planning Commission that sit on council that don't sit on Landmarks. I hate to tell you, but there've been a number of issues that have gone through planning that, where the council members didn't agree with the rest of the commission. So it's a moot point.
And my observation and understanding of the plan is that the way it stands now, if someone wanted to do a facade change, I believe they could put up purple aluminum siding. So there's not guidelines to encourage people for a viewscape that's going to blend in with the historic downtown that we take for granted. But it's also as simple as someone who owns an old building downtown may have some crumbling brick, not have the resources or the knowledge or understanding of how do I fix this so that it blends in, and are there some grant funds available? And those are the sorts of questions that came up in a couple of the meetings that we had, including the public hearing, and they were able to identify funding resources that I had no idea existed. So I am very much a historic preservationist in terms of interest. I don't have the knowledge base. So you could put six people like me from council on the Plan Commission, and I would be absolutely not helpful to, you know, somebody who wants to do the right thing and blend in. But I don't have the knowledge base, and I don't have the resources. So I have seen them work not in an adversarial role, but as in a helpful role. So I don't think we should take for granted the downtown. But without that knowledge base, I think it may be an opportunity lost. So that's just, you know, my observation, having been on Landmarks, again, not having the knowledge base, but really having the interest to want to preserve, you know, the beauty that we have downtown without being restrictive, but being helpful.
Yes.
So that's just my observation, anyway.
Yeah, and my view is, is at the end of the day, if somebody is going to do a work on a building, whether it's the overlay district or the historic district, the first thing they should be doing is talking to Michael Stacy and zoning. And currently, what he'll do is, he'll determine whether or not the building is a local landmark. If it is, it goes to Landmarks under chapter 38, the user design guidelines. If it's not a local landmark, then it goes to the Plan Commission, and they have their design guidelines. So I don't really think operationally much really changes, other than who's at the table to make the decision-making process. And one thing I have to investigate is, I believe statutorily, the makeup of the Landmarks Commission is dictated by state statute, not ordinance, but I have to double-check that. So, you know, when they say there's only one council member on Landmarks, and there's three plus the mayor on Plan Commission, that's an area that I need to look into, because I think that might be a statutory thing. I don't know if that's anything this body can decide.
It is for the Planning Commission, but not for the Landmarks.
That's what I have to verify, because I know the Landmarks do have some statutorily, just as the housing authority or any commission does. There are some statutory requirements. I just haven't dug into that yet. But we can do that before the next meeting, and try to be able to at least clarify a few things here and there. You know, I, you know, before we updated the ordinance a few years ago, I would have been more inclined to say, let's do this. Now, I really, quite frankly, I don't really think, at the end of the day, it's going to make that much of a difference. And I think that what we've seen the last several years is the people that have purchased the buildings in the downtown have tried to invest more money than previously was going on. And some buildings just, you know, are not eligible and shouldn't be considered for preservation, because that would be an insult, you know, for people that believe in preservation. So for those people to go to Landmarks on the building that's non-contributing, I guess I don't really see the point, because they can pretty much, they don't have to follow... follow chapter 38 anyway. So they're really just gonna be following chapter 78, which is regulated under the plan commission now. So for the non-contributing buildings, I really don't see a difference. Um, we always encourage people to do historical preservation. I talked to people about it today that came in that just purchased a building. So we always have that conversation when they come into City Hall anyway. Um, and, and we do, you know, provide them information on who they can talk to on the Landmarks. I don't see that changing either. Um, so, you know, I guess, at the end of the day, you guys can do what they want, but practically speaking, I really don't think it's gonna do much, other than it's gonna, all the decisions will be made by the Landmarks instead of some of them and the rest being currently made by the plan commission. Um, you know, I, that's the way I look at it. Go ahead.
Just one other thing to add, and then I'll leave it be till next time. But we also heard pretty consistently that people were, the people that were there liked the idea of streamlining, because they found the current process very confusing. Do I go to plan commission for this? And do I go to Landmarks for that? And again, it doesn't, historic preservation, I, I may be overusing that term, because it also, um, some of these buildings are not historic and there is, we've had a lot of conversations about those buildings that were built much later, um, still having value and benefit. And the goal is not to make them look like they were built in the 1800, 1870 or whatever. In fact, that's, that's contrary to their goal. It's, how can we, if you are gonna do a facade change, how can we help you do that cost-effectively in a way that's still gonna blend in, keeping the character of your building, even if it was built in 1970? So, um, I've just found them to be extraordinarily helpful and, um, have a lot of really great ideas regardless of when it was built. And I heard consistency, you know, being, just being able to go to one place, um, made people, even who had older or newer buildings, they were delighted about that. So that's just the people that showed up at the meetings, but I, I thought it seemed like they were in favor, so.
Okay. All right. I did get a note during all this. This was supposed to be on the next council meeting. There was a, a note on the email and it didn't get picked up on it until now. So that's what happened.
All right. Can we just rewind?
Well, just, just...
So we'll, we'll prep for the next meeting, at least.
In your resolution?
Yes.
Where do you find prehistoric people?
What?
In Stoughton. In Stoughton.
Prehistoric people?
It does. It's, this is, yeah. It's, uh, one, it's...
How many whereas is?
The fourth whereas from the bottom.
All right. We'll take a look at that, too.
Well, but then, then if you look at, you know, the Native Americans would fit in that and they would say that then it'd be a totally different landmark commission.
Okay.
And so that's where that comes in. So you, you might wanna tweak that language unless that's what you want.
All right. As we digress, so we'll put this on, I guess, as a first reading at the next meeting. And then we'll have a presentation.
That explains a lot.
Yep. It does.
Okay.
You guys had it figured out.
Thank you.
All right. You bet. Um, so the, the last item on here is, uh, item number 16, Fourth Amendment to Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement and Fourth Amendment to Agreement to Undertake Development. And this is coming from the Stoughton Reed, uh, Stoughton Riverfront Development LLC. So it's coming from the RDA, basically. And we do have the ability to go into closed session, um, and discuss where we're at on this item. Is there anything we should talk about, Matt, before we go into closed session?
Yeah. Well, I don't know that there's a lot to talk about, in the sense that we don't actually have agreements in front of you tonight to amend the existing agreements. Um, the existing agreements include a deadline to close of the end of March. Um, uh, the Redevelopment Authority took action at its last meeting that led us to, to not put anything on, to not prepare amendments for your, for your consideration tonight. And I guess I would leave that to, uh, President Hirsch and, and Dave to, to brief you on that. And whether you think that briefing should be in open or closed session, I'll leave to you on.
I, I guess to keep the integrity of discussions and to have things more freely, freely, um, discussed that involve, you know, certain entities that are working with the RDA, I, I guess because some of those are private conversations, I would, I would think that should go into closed session.
Okay. So I guess to do that, you wanna read the motion to go into closed session?
Sure. The common council may convene in closed session per state statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session and ISO move.
Second.
Second by Mieske.
And I think Dale is on the line to Dale Reeves.
Okay.
So, let's take a two-minute break while WSTO...
Okay. Couple things. Are there any questions or comments before we vote on going into closed session? Okay. Hearing none. So we have to do a roll call vote. Candy, when you're ready?
Yep. Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Benegas?
Aye.
Takowski?
Aye.
Caravelllo?
Aye.
Raff?
Aye.
Harley?
Aye.
That's 12 alters in favor.
All right. So we'll prepare to go into closed session. Um, did you wanna take a couple minutes, Regina?
I don't know if people wanna, I think go either way.
You wanna stretch? We can.
Stretch. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. I'll just check with WSTO.